All right. Hopefully we won't flood up any worse.
Yes, very good.
Please raise your hand. I, D. Arnold.
I, D. Arnold.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of Alderman Ward 1.
Of Alderman Ward 1.
And that I support.
And that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the statements or.
And the statements or.
The provisions of state statutes.
Provisions of state statutes.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
The City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
The City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
Faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
So help me God. By the power vested in me as city clerk of the City of Grand Valley, I commission you as Alderman Ward 1 of Grand Valley, Missouri on this 23rd day of April, 2012.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up there we have Alderman Long West.
Please hold up your hand. I, D. Arnold.
I, D. Arnold.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
Qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of Alderman Ward 2.
Of Alderman Ward 2.
And that I support.
And that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the statements or.
And the statements or.
And the provisions.
Provisions.
Of state statutes.
State statutes.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
In office.
In office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Comes into my possession.
So help me God. By the power vested in me as the City Clerk of Grand Valley, I commission you as Alderman Ward 2 of Grand Valley, Missouri on this 23rd day of April, 2012.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next up Alderman Bob Edley.
I, Bob Edley.
I, Bob Edley.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of Alderman Ward 3.
For the office of Alderman Ward 3.
And that I support.
And that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the statements or.
And the statements or.
The provisions of state statutes.
Provisions of state statutes.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the power vested in me as city clerk of the City of Grand Valley, I commission you as Alderman Ward 3 of Grand Valley, Missouri on this 23rd day of April, 2012. Congratulations. Please hold up your hand. I, Mike Todd.
I, Mike Todd.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of mayor.
For the office of mayor.
And that I support.
And I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the statements or.
And the statements or.
The provisions of state statutes.
Provisions of state statutes.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Of the City of Grand Valley.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the power vested in me as City Clerk of the City of Grand Valley, I commission you as mayor of Grand Valley, Missouri on this 23rd day of April, 2012.
Okay, next up is the Senator Jender. I motion Alderman Stoll to accept the Senator Jender by second.
Second.
That's Alderman Todd. Any discussion?
In my office. Uh, we actually have a closet within my office and then the files are kept under lock and key and private for your safe.
You got a key to the closet too, right?
Yes. I've got a key to the closet and then key to get into the lock box which holds the keys to get into the.
Well, let's have some.
You have to give blood and your firstborn.
Any just some questions or discussion? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand sign. Move on to second round of ordinances.
Uh, Bill 1229, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into the Grand Rapids State Bank of Missouri for banking service. First reading, Bill B. 12-29.
I motion Alderman West to accept Bill 12-29 for its first reading. Bring it back by title for second reading by second.
Second.
Second all over the world. Any discussion?
I have one question. Is this in line with the spending we've already done prior to the statement?
Say that again.
Is the $900 in aggregate annual fees that.
Right. That's all we're gonna be paying for is printing the deposit slips. We're not gonna be paying for any other services. Other than printing our checks.
It's not higher.
No.
Any just some questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand sign.
6-0, first reading, Mayor. Bill B. 12-30, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for construction work zone enforcement. First reading, Bill B. 12-30.
I move that we accept Bill number B-30 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I motion Alderman Todd to accept Bill 12-30 for its first reading. Bring it back by second reading by title only by second.
Second.
Second Alderman Stolling. Any discussion?
This is where they get a double time for.
Right, this is funding out will be from Bodot for work zones like when they start on the interchange projects and whatnot. So we can do extra enforcement in those areas and then Bodot will actually pay us to have people there off duty to work their site.
So we're gonna have every time we got there every day.
Yeah, every day. There's no match for this, so it's 100% funding.
Is this covered under the city's commercial general liability insurance if the system part renewed liability?
We would still be operating underneath the police department, so it'd still be under the city.
So it isn't, it doesn't require an additional.
No, ma'am.
What is the value? What is the amount of that?
Uh, the liability is $2 million. And what, the only thing that's required by NPR, uh, our insurance company is the training of those that are working work zone. They have the proper training, they have the proper traffic training as well. Uh, and, and all those individuals have gone through that training. So they are covered.
Anything additional? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand sign.
6-0, first reading, Mayor. Bill B. 12-31, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Jay Love's Lawn and Lastview and LLC for banking services. First reading, Bill B. 12-31.
I move that we accept Bill number B. 12-31 for its first reading and bring it back for second reading by title only.
I motion Alderman Stoll to approve Bill 12-31 for its first reading. Bring it back by title for its second reading by second.
Second.
Second all over the world. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. In reviewing the information provided. Staff, this state official, uh, company that was recommended was not proposed bid. Been looking it down, I'm not sure, uh, try and look at it. One of the reasons was the dollar 50 per mile for transport debris from the site. And, uh, the debris will be going to some land deal. And approximately 18 miles from my southern, of course you recommend 821 miles from my northern. Of course you recommend anywhere from, uh, $27 to $31 for mileage fees to transport a load. Uh, if you're looking at three hours to produce a load or more, uh, it's, it's a break even on the, on the cost for that additional mileage that they get in comparison to the $30 an hour rate that, that the Timberline Church, the land payment is going to be charging. The big, it's little savings, a little bit less than that if you compare the fact that the other company was charging a high level of low company than we were from Grand Valley. The other consideration staff gave was that the one company did not have a brush hog for mowing the lawns. And our ordinance requires that these lawns, any issues we dealt with starting at eight inches. And, uh, that's long enough that I don't think brush hog would be required in a lot of cases. And so then, then this particular company would need to cut something a little higher than 30, kind of, but would be able to handle it probably in that with cheaper than only, which would be what I would do if I was in that business. So I'm not sure I agree with staff on the recommendation for the company to go with here. They'll get it for $30 an hour in one company and $32.50, $42.50, two services, uh, from recommending. Provided, so. I would need to know more information from staff to give a degree to staff on my, this recommendation.
First off, let me kinda try to discuss and order some of the questions. The company Timberline that has put in the lowest bid, one, they didn't, I, I mean, I know that, that the suggestion is that they could go out and rent a brush hog when they need it, but the bottom line is they, they didn't respond to the bid with all the equipment that was needed. Um, there's a reason that we request that the company have a brush hog and that's because we do actually use that quite a lot. You know, we, in fact, we just had a situation last week where we had to go out and mow 14 lots. And, uh, so that was, that was part of the consideration. Also, the company that, that's, uh, Timberline that's running here in Grand Valley, uh, their business address is out of a home. It's not licensed or zoned for, for a business to be there and there's actually no business license to that address for the company. So we, we kinda put all these things together and we thought, you know, just doesn't smell right to staff. And then on top of the debris removal, yeah, you do have the additional, uh, fee, so it, it is kind of hard to compare. But on top of the additional dollar 50 per mile, you have the additional charge per ton that they're hauling off. So I could see it adding up very quickly with Timberline. Uh, I think that the contractor that staff has recommended is the lowest, uh, bid, in my opinion, and I think they provided the most straightforward responsive bid to staff.
I, I would understand that him having a business out of his home may or may not be something that requires a license and does not do national work with his business in Grand Valley. Isn't he working in Grand Valley? I could urge him, in fact, to, to urge him to get a license to pursue land service, lawn service in our community. Uh, so he is meeting all appropriate requirements there. Just what I know about some of the, what we're dealing with here on some of the larger side. I don't see a brush hog being that high but be able to justify the difference of, um, the cost of that purchase.
Okay. Well, uh, I, I understand your position. I certainly do. I respectfully disagree. I think that we need a, a brush hog on a more consistent basis. But I, I, I agree.
And the other question we've been, I know we went to having staff do it. I know this time of year things are gonna pick up and it'll be more of these deals that it may be more than must have to handle. I know it also is an issue when it comes to billing to get the funding back. Might be interested in finding out what, what our percentage of collection rate is on, uh, the bank that's ever done. Because if they're paying money out for other service and they're not collecting any funds in and not getting, uh, successful, giving those funds, maybe someone should want to keep in-house. Those are paid services, equipment that they have in-house to be able to do this, send them to services. So I can, I don't know what, how that would bear on the, on the law cost for the software she provided.
Well, one of the things that we're looking at, the reason why we looked at outsourcing abatement is because, um, we're wanting to start building our own trails in-house, which means that we're gonna be utilizing the staff that we have in-house for that specialized service instead of putting them on a mower. And so, uh, when it looked at contracting out for either trails or contracting out for abatement, abatement was much less costly and we can recover that cost of, through that billing and I'll get those collection rate percentages for you. But, um, that was the purpose behind this.
Yeah, the, the only thing I, I might add also to that, Alderman Arnold, is we've kinda come up with a new process that we're gonna try out this year. Uh, historically, we haven't been good at collecting those abatement fees because it was so cumbersome in those assessments. It was lean, so we just had a few things to choose from. Code's Department has been working cooperatively with the prosecutor and, and the municipal court. Uh, and we're actually looking at just issuing tickets for violators when we go out and mow somebody's yard. They'll actually get a, a ticket and they'll have to appear in municipal court. Once they come to court, then the, uh, the fines or however much it costs for the abatement would be part of the recovery from court.
May I ask a question, uh, in reference to the one of last week that I went out and looked at those properties? Uh, when the gentleman said this was an ongoing event for five years that he's lived there, is there a way that we can change the, uh, ordinance that if for five years this gentleman is having 20 lots, wait until the city will tax him? Okay, that's, one of ours is going out to tag a lot, then wait 10 days, you gotta go back out and then start doing the mowing. It seems like it's an awful lot of waste. Can we make it that it, that it's a nuisance? Because the person has not, I mean, so many times repetitiously, I know somebody can have a death in the family, I know somebody, those are different items. But when this is done every month in like it's a game, is there a way we can change the rules?
I mean, I know that Ryan is looking at, they're looking at ordinances right now for that. After that conversation with Mr. Cook about that beforehand too, so we're gonna be trying some, some different things in order to get the point across.
Well, I was totally amazed because I don't go back in the side back in there, receive the pristine homes. I mean, the yard's all wonderful except for all these lots this gentleman owned. And I mean, I can understand being upset. And I was very, uh, privileged to meet some of the neighbors down there when I was talking to them. And, uh, they seemed hopeful for the city to find a way that they don't have to go through this. So I appreciate y'all looking into it.
On this, Ryan, I, I just want you to talk briefly. Uh, last time this came up with this company, uh, I know that the owner's wife is employee of the, of the city. I just wanna make sure that they have addressed that for transparency's sake.
Yeah, absolutely.
The last time I got some calls about that. I, I think you talked Alderman Schaefer about at least one thing you're gonna do to make sure that, that we can go to that at all.
Well, and actually, I would like to address it this time and say that we have to talk to our city attorney, Mr. Cook, uh, to determine whether it would be a conflict of interest to award this contract to an employee's company spouse, spouses' company. And, um, through his research, we found that it is, and I would like for you to confirm it for me, if you would, Mr. Cook, that it is not a conflict of interest.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so having said that, that is the furthest in detail that we have gone, um, was to make sure that legally it was an appropriate bid response and that there was, would not be an issue if, uh, the contract was awarded to Jay Love.
I know that last time you were concerned about if you calve on vehicles and city parking lots, is that something that you're worried?
It's been addressed. Yeah, it's already been addressed.
My, my biggest concern, I, I see why you picked the company bid. And while I understand Alderman Arnold's issue, I'd prefer not to have an open-ended, you know, a dollar 50 a mile charge. I think that's, that's gonna cost a whole lot of money in the long run. And I think to answer the question on the, uh, brush hog, I'm sure we would be built for that if they did rent it. I would assume that, that could, that. I understand where you're going with the bid.
So their, their bid was, Love's bid was with the brush hog in it?
Absolutely.
Their bid was with it. And the other company bid, was their bid with the brush hog and the lock ring down rockin', so they bid it without it?
Yeah, they bid it without the brush hog.
They couldn't really come back on us charges for that, right?
Well, it, it wasn't included in the bid so they could consider that extra equipment that was not part of the bid.
They, they did, so.
We, we actually had that.
The money didn't get up with the brush hog versus not.
Yeah, we've had that problem in the issue, or that, that issue in the past with, uh, a different contractor. Wanted us to pay the rental of his brush hog for the day and his fee on top of that.
I'm gonna ball on Molly's thing, dude. Open-ended, like, the, uh, open-ended on the, the miles that I'd add up.
Any additional discussion or questions, ma'am? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand sign.
Aye.
Who's no?
Bill B. 12-32, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator purchase of 2012 international 7300 dump truck. First reading, Bill B. 12-32.
I move that we accept Bill number B. 12-32, first reading, bring it back for second reading by title only.
Yeah, I motion Alderman Stoll to accept Bill 12-32 for its first reading. Bring it back by title for its second reading by the second.
Second.
Second Alderman Todd. Any discussion?
Ryan, can you tell, uh, can you tell us how we got to this point? Why we need $120,000 on this truck?
Actually, yes, he can. Ryan's got a presentation for you to provide you with some additional information, uh, about the background and the need for this vehicle.
You knew that.
For this piece of equipment, yeah.
Wouldn't expect it to be too easy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for letting uh, direct you on this ordinance tonight. You need a second here to get my computer set up and we will rock and roll with this thing. You're gonna have to forgive me, my old place because I don't have my clicker. I can usually wander around council chambers with my clicker, but I don't have that tonight. So the ordinance that you have, uh, before you tonight is for the purchase of a international 7300 dump truck and the equipment that's gonna accompany that. Ta-da.
It's okay, Ryan, we have entertainment until you get it ready.
I like that song, actually. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole city's mission statement. You guys are familiar with it. It's been the mission statement for a while now. But this speaks to, uh, providing a higher level of service to the water and sewer and transportation, uh, pieces of, of our city services. When we first started looking at this dump truck, and I'm talking about at budget time, when, when we went through budget, this was included in the budget and we had brief discussions at budget time when, when the board approved the 2012 budget. There was three questions that I really wanted to ask. The first one is why do we need a new truck? Second one is, is how will it better serve the community? And then third, uh, why did we choose this particular truck and equipment? Jumping right into the first one. The current fleet that we have is not designed for the, i- it's not good at handling the use that we need. Uh, we've got, in the fleet, we've got a Kenworth dump truck, which is sufficient. A GMC flatbed truck, which is suitable. Uh, two Ford F-450 utility trucks, which are contractor-grade light-duty trucks. And then we have a backup one-ton Ford pickup truck, uh, for when the two 450s are down, which is quite frequent. Case in point, we had February 1st of 2011, we had the Kansas City Blizzard. It was, uh, a little over a year ago. Had 14 inches of snow. Uh, we had blizzard conditions, uh, because of the winds. And during that storm, we only had one truck and we pulled a Bobcat out of the garage to push snow because every other truck that we had was out of service. And, uh, we had plenty of folks to operate the equipment. We just didn't have the trucks. The two 450s, the Kenworth went down. And, I mean, we, we made it through the storm, but as a, at the time when I was Director of Public Works, I, I wasn't real excited with the outcome of that project. And the mayor actually was snowed in up here at City Hall with us at the time. And, uh, that's when we really started this discussion about equipment.
But I told you, we use bigger trucks.
And so, being a, a good director, I jumped all over that and reminded the mayor of that over and over for the rest of the year. So that's, that's, uh, that storm right there is kinda what prompted what us looking into it. And, and part of it is that we, we thought, okay, how are we gonna get our equipment up to snuff? So we came up with a three-year replacement plan. Uh, and the thought is that we purchase one new truck per year, that the truck would be appropriately equipped and sized for operations, After three years, our fleet would be up to date, it would be sufficient, and it would have a fifteen-year replacement cycle on it. That's important right now, because the four-fifties that we have, per the BURB, and that's the replacement plan that the board approves every year, it shows that it has a ten-year life cycle for that truck. That truck does have that life cycle, as long as you're not using it for pushing snow, applying materials, it doesn't last that long. We have, the two that we have right now are nine years old, and they break down every single snowstorm. So the next question that we want to ask is, how will this better serve the community? Since the truck is sized appropriately, it's gonna help staff to be able to finish the snow routes more efficiently, we'll be able to get through it. As part of the truck, we will also have a larger plow blade on it, it'll be eleven-foot blade. It is a heavy-duty, commercial-grade equipment, from the spreader to the plow to the, the single axle dump truck cabin chassis. Part of the salt and calcium fluoride application, when we put that in with the new truck and the controls that it has, we have better and more controlled material application. We're able to cover more lane miles quicker, so I know that speed when it comes to snow removal, I mean, you don't wanna blast down the road at forty miles per hour, but when you have an eight-foot plow on the front of an F-four-fifty, and you hit one lane, and then you go the other direction, you hit the other lane, you always still have that spot right in the middle. With an eleven-foot blade, we can make one pass, and we're done with that lane. And I skipped the, what we obviously would have less downtime or out-of-service time, which is what killed us in the storm back in February of last year. And then, once the replacement program is completed, we will be reducing the snow routes from four. Right now, we have four different routes throughout the city, we would be cutting that back to three routes, so that's gonna add up to savings with manpower. Instead of having four drivers out on the road pushing snow, we would only have to have three. And it's our belief from everything that we've researched and everything we understand that we'll still be able to do the city quicker and more efficiently with this, with a three route system with three of these trucks. One of the biggest benefits to this truck is that it has a year-round application. With the four-fifty, we do have that, but we can only use it for certain things. It's not big enough to really use as a dump truck, per se, so we can't haul material with it or anything. This truck will have a full-size dump bed on it, so it will be used for material delivery and hauling. Staff will be able to haul equipment to the job site that currently they have to, say "road" is kind of how we say it, they just have to "road" to the, to the job site right now, because we don't have anything heavy-duty enough to haul it. We have the trailer, but for example, our case backhoe that we have, any time that we do a project, the guy has to drive the backhoe there instead of pulling it up on a trailer. And that's hard on our, on our backhoe, I mean, it's not, it, it can be roded, but it puts a lot more wear and tear on it. The truck will also serve more needs as we move ahead with in-house street maintenance. Looking several years down the road, we'll have to replace the patch truck that we have, and when we do that, we don't wanna buy just another truck that's dedicated for patching that just sits there seven months out of the year not being used. So the thought is, is when we come to that point, we're gonna buy a patching trailer, and we'd be able to use this truck to pull it around, that way we don't have just, you know, we don't have a dump truck or, or a full-size truck just sitting around most of the year. Finally, on this piece, large hauling, larger hauling capacity means fewer trips, fewer miles, less fuel consumed, and less wear and tear. By having more capacity, we're much more efficient, and it tears up the equipment a lot less. So finally, we ask why this truck and why right now? Replacements required, it's not an option. We're not, I'm not here telling, asking if we can replace this truck, we have to replace it, or we will be down a truck. The question is, what are we gonna replace it with? I think the current equipment is worn out, and it's not keeping up with the workload. I don't have numbers off the top of my head, it actually came to me late in the day after our fleet mechanic was already gone, Andrew had gone home for the day. But I know every storm that we've had, we've had to replace something on each one of the four-fifties, and then we had to do some significant work to the Kenworth. It seems like we go through breaks, we go through, we had a wheel break, we had alternators go out, and the truck that we're actually looking at replacing right now is scheduled through the BURB to be replaced this year, because it has a two-thousand-dollar injector module that needs replaced. Like I just said, every storm requires significant expenditure in emergency repairs and maintenance, that's not just, that doesn't just impact our bottom line from a parks perspective. We have to have our fleet mechanic in pretty much around the clock during a storm right now, because our equipment's not, not cut the mustard. And then, obviously, repair and maintenance is only gonna grow every year that we continue to put it off. If it was that bad in two thousand eleven, we were fortunate to have a mild winter this last year, twenty thirteen, even if we have, you know, several snowstorms, it'll be much worse than what we had in two thousand eleven. And before I, I jump to the next point, you know, we talked about, I think at budget time, you also remember me saying that we would look at used trucks versus the price of a new. In fact, at the time, at budget time, I said, I'm pretty sure that I can get two used trucks for the price of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar new truck. We looked into that, the reason we don't have that's because we couldn't find it. MoDOT, the equipment that they got rid of, the equipment that they surplus, the trucks that they surplus weren't, it's nothing we wanted. I mean, as Alexa would say, they had sucked all the good out of it, it was shot. So we didn't wanna, you know, buy something that we're gonna have to put money into right on the back. And even their equipment, their snow plow blades, their, their spreaders, I mean, Tom went up several times to the maintenance yard and looked at the equipment that they're putting out for sale. Every time they'd get ready to have a sale, he'd go check it out, and he'd come back and say, Ryan, it's, you know, it's junk, it's got holes rusted through it, cutting edges need replaced, so we would've, we would've spent more money trying to do that if we would've gone with the used truck, and it was reliable. So, I guess the reason that I really like this International is we're not buying this truck, experimenting, saying, I wonder if this'll work with our application. There are communities all around us that have similar programs, and they use the same equipment. The city of Blue Springs has this exact same truck, Jackson County, Missouri, Missouri Department of Transportation, city of Oak Grove, city of Raytown, many, many more, I could go on and on, Overland Park, Olathe. Most of the communities, I say most because there's some out there that just will never have equipment like this, but they, they've moved on beyond the, the four-fifties and gone into a heavy-duty truck. The truck itself comes from several vendors. The cabin chassis, which, for those that aren't aware, cabin chassis is just basically the frame, the drivetrain, and the cab on the truck. That's how they ship it from the factory. It's an international seventy-three hundred, and it's on marked contract through Diamond International, so International is the one that, that won the, the bid through Mid-America Regional Council. This right here is, that's the international seventy-three hundred, that's actually the same application that we have with the bed, and this is just another picture of a different Equipment is purchased through a separate vendor, and it does not come with the truck. So the bed, the plow, the wiring, and the hydraulics are all purchased through, through a separate vendor, it's on a different contract. What we'd be buying for this truck is the Viking Full Trip Power Reverse eleven-inch snowplow, probably more than you wanna know. We have a Duraclass stainless steel dump body, and the MoDOT heavy-duty truck package, which is the hydraulics, the wiring, that sort of stuff. The stainless steel body, the reason we decided to go with that, is the seventy-three hundred is actually, the truck has a fifteen-year life expectancy with this application. So we're not saying if we just drive it, it'll have that long, they're saying if you use this as a snowplow, it'll last for fifteen years, as long as you take care of it. The bed that came with it was a mild steel bed, and it had a seven-year life expectancy. So in seven years, we were gonna be replacing that bed with a new one, basically just to make it full life, so we'd go through two beds in fifteen years, essentially. The stainless steel dump body is a five-thousand-dollar upgrade on a forty-thousand-dollar bed. So to us, staff, it made sense, it was a better use of money, get twice the life out of the bed, otherwise, we'd be buying another one. The equipment's on MoDOT contract through Viking Sides Midwest, it's actually on the Out Above Road, just in between here and Oak Grove, just on the south side of Bi-70. I don't know how many of you drive that way, but you'll always see plows, spreaders sitting out there, and that's where MoDOT has all their equipment put together. It's kind of hard to see in here because of the lighting, but this is the actual style of bed that you saw mounted on the other truck. It's stainless steel, obviously, before it's polished, and this is the eleven-foot snowplow that we would be purchasing along with it. So in conclusion, I think through this presentation, I'll be more than happy to answer questions, but I think I've answered the three questions. One, we, we do need this truck, and we need a new truck. The truck will better serve the community and provide a higher level of service, and then this particular truck and equipment are the right fit for our application if we're the city. Questions?
Can I ask, what, who is going to guarantee, I mean, there will be a warranty with this truck, right?
Yes.
With all these different assemblies, who gets, I mean...
It just depends, there, for example, International is gonna warranty the cabin chassis, so the drivetrain, the motor, the wiring harnesses, that sort of thing, will all be covered by International. Those warranties, it's different, for example, the drivetrain is sixty months for the warranty for that, but that truck is covered, depending on what system you're on anyways, for twelve months to eighty-four months. Now, when you move over to the equipment, Viking Kive, Sive, I can't ever say that, yeah, Viking Sives will warranty the equipment, their installation, their application.
Is that legislation?
Yes, Parks and Rec.
How many different drivers are gonna be going out of the truck?
Two. In theory, I mean, well, it'll, it's a two-route system, whenever we have snow removal, we run twelve hours each. A truck will be assigned to a specific route, so if all goes well and as planned, which it seldom does, we will only have two drivers in there.
My point being is, the one or two people that are, that are designated to be that truck will take better care of the vehicle if they know that, you know, it's not for a lot of people to drive the truck.
Yeah, if it's their, if it's their snow route truck, it's, they're, they kind of have ownership in it, and it just makes people more responsible with the maintenance, and they wanna take their equipment.
So on my understanding, next year, you're gonna come back and want another truck this time next year.
Absolutely. That's part of the three-year plan, but that's not what you're approving tonight.
Explain the notion.
One of the questions that you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You indicated that, as Scott said, that you're looking at replacing two vehicles. However, those three vehicles have annual mileage of fifty-four hundred miles or less a year, so they're really not used that much, actually, less than five hundred miles a month.
Yes and no.
My question with regards to that is, where is our return on investment? We're looking at three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars worth of vehicles in the next three years, and what, riding them less than five hundred dollars for five hundred miles a year, or five hundred miles a month, where, what is the return on investment?
Well, I think-
That's a thousand dollars a month for the next ten years, or three thousand dollars a month for the next ten years.
Yes. The mileage is kind of deceptive, because we put more hours on a truck than we do miles, and that's not to say for every mile we drive, we drive, and the truck's running for an hour, but our, if you look at the trucks, it's proof that it's not just, you know, I've got, my truck that I drive has forty-seven thousand miles on it, and I can still see my reflection in the paint. These trucks are rusted, the brake calipers are shot, we have things like injector modules going out, it's because we put so many hours on it, and it's a severe duty type of work, it's not just, you know, highway miles, that sort of thing. The return on investment, to me, I mean, there's, there's really no way to quantify and say, okay, if you do this truck, we're gonna, we're gonna have X. But I think the return is, comes knowing that our citizens will have a snow route that's plowed, and that we won't be in the midst of a storm like we were last year, and we have one truck and one Bobcat, because that's not providing a level of, any level of service to our citizens. And I think if, if that means that we need to spend some money on the appropriate-sized equipment, then that's the cost of business for the city, because we have an obligation to provide clean streets to our residents during a snowstorm.
So you're saying that these have, instead of a ten-year, because of the permits that we purchased in two thousand and three, have a ten-year lifespan, so you're saying these have a fifteen-year lifespan?
These do. The four-fifty, though, let me make sure that you understand, the four-fifty has a ten-year lifespan for a Parks and Rec application, for example, you know, if they're using it to haul dirt back and forth. The lifespan is five to six years, isn't that right, Tom? Whenever you, whenever you put it into like a snow route application like this, or if a contractor goes out and buys a truck, and he's gonna push parking lots the whole, you know, during an entire snowstorm, that lifespan is cut almost in half, because you're putting so much strain and pressure, and you're abusing the truck, it's not what it was intended for.
So the primary use for these vehicles are going to be snow.
Yes, it'll be used year-round. We'll be using it on water breaks, we'll be, you know, when we have to repair a sewer lateral, sewer line collapse, any time that we have to haul materials, if we need to, for example, we need to get, you know, some three-quarter inch clean rock with this truck, we can actually go pick it up instead of paying Barbara Quarries to come deliver it to us. It'll, it'll be used year-round, but yet, the biggest need for this truck, the reason that I'm here asking for this truck, is because of the integrity of our snow removal program.
What other options have you looked at, for a second? When you talked about the used vehicles and the others mixed.
Yeah, we looked at used-
Or in the last couple of seconds.
We looked at, at used vehicles. Another thing that was, we didn't spend much time investigating, but that we did come across, was, you know, trying to do some sort of lease. And the problem with that is that we have multiple vendors for one piece of equipment, so in order to competitive, competitively bid a lease, you would have to have all these vendors come together and cooperate and be willing to offer a lease, it's not just like going to, you know, for a police car, going to Moly Chevrolet or any, any of the other places where they just buy the equipment or buy the vehicle from one dealership. There's a lot of different people that, that play into this.
Am I correct, though, in thinking of the year-round use, if when you're going to be doing the in-house work on the trails, that would, this truck is going to be beneficial to us, too?
Yeah, yeah, if, if we did trail work with it, we certainly could, could use it for that application. I don't wanna sit.
I'm sorry. How are you gonna share this, with trying to do street patches, and Shannon needs to do the parks?
Yeah, well, I think ultimately, let's just be honest, it's enterprise funds that are paying for it, so water, sewer, and transportation pay for it, they give priority on it. We would obviously help out Shannon and their department any time that we could or is available, but, you know, we wouldn't really be staying true to the intended use of those funds if we were giving Parks Trails priority over something that water, sewer, and transportation paid for.
So the three trucks, two trucks would actually be down the road, two trucks would actually be just for basically snow building, is right? I mean, if you got one truck, it's gonna be, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah. First truck, this year's truck, obviously, I'm saying that I can use it for a year-round application. Your question is, okay, when we get truck number two and truck number three, what are those gonna do year-round?
Right.
Most likely, I would say that one of the trucks would be used for the street patching application, and hopefully some sort of sewer cleaning maintenance program, you know, I have, there's, there's always needs out there for equipment, but when I'm, when I'm looking at our equipment, I'm trying to think, okay, what's the best way that we can provide service to our infrastructure and not break the bank? So for example, if we need to, at some point in the future, get a jetter or a backer or something like that, for our sewer lines to be able to start cleaning those out, which that's, I fully intend to have that in-house one of these days, too, because that'll save us even more money, and we start our own sewer maintenance program, it's another use for this truck. You know, it can have a TV set up, and the backer set up on a trailer that's pulled behind it. So I can't say unequivocally that truck, the truck that we buy in year number three will be used every day, but again, that's not the truck I'm asking for today.
Ryan, did I hear you say that we have trailer, that can haul equipment, that we don't need to pull the can right there?
Yeah, we have, the GMC and the Kenworth are actually what we use the heavy-duty trailer to pull behind, but we can't, it's not, those trucks aren't strong enough to pull the back out. So it would be nice, rather than having to trailer one piece of equipment out there at a time, which is what we have to do with our mini excavator or our Bobcat, you know, with this truck, you could haul all of it to the job site at the same time. So, yeah, no additional cost for the trailer, we already have that.
Again, this is purchase outright, there's no lease combination, please purchase, turn to that.
Correct.
I will say that on your MoDOT, you're, you're right on with that, because working with a MoDOT, I, I ask many questions about some of their, their used stuff, and like anybody, they're gonna keep their good stuff, and the, the lesser needed stuff, so I'd have to agree, you know, we'd just be behind headaches.
Yeah. Well, and the rumor was, and the hope, I think, of all the smaller cities, was that since MoDOT was scaling back so much, they were cutting so much staff that they were gonna be letting go some of that newer equipment, but they didn't, they found the old equipment to be rid of.
Yeah, I, I think, the way I heard it was, because they're thinking they're gonna turn loose some projects in the next year, so- Yeah, I, I think, the way I heard it was because they're thinking they're gonna turn loose some projects in the next year, so you're not gonna do that.
That would make sense.
I'm gonna- I have a memory about it, over a year and a few, when we purchased this truck, a truck that had a dump head, it was designed for snow removal and they'd dump salt and all that and so forth.
It's not been on my watch and we don't have that truck anymore. The Kenworth doesn't have the belly dump. It may have been proposed, but the only-
I'm gonna talk about it, my approval for purchase because of savings over a year.
Okay, yeah, no, we have, since I've been here, we haven't bought any trucks. When Jeff was here, I would, I think the most recent purchase was the GMC flatbed. It's a two-wheel drive with a big flatbed behind it, a heavy-duty truck, but it doesn't have a spreader, it's, it's just a spreader that sits in the bed.
I think we purchased a big, a new dump head for one of the trucks.
Okay.
Two, three, four years ago.
Okay, and that may have been it.
How, how are we coming along with bringing the Davin back in-house?
Good, I mean, we're planning on going full steam ahead on it this year. Tom's been doing some training with the maintenance guys and they're actually putting the program back together and, you know, I don't know if you wanna say anything about it, Tom, but-
We're on training programs, we're, we'll shop another week and then Jeff will be, we'll start doing schedules for all the in-house work. And we won't be bidding or some kind of after work, but it'll all be done by our own crews. And that's one, this truck is an essential part of the, it's both concrete, asphalt and the sewer projects that we're doing here.
So, you really could use a lot, utilize two trucks with vacuuming back in-house.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't know about the third one's the only one, saying that honestly, I don't know if that's gonna, that's two years. Yeah, you know, we're also starting to do some of the, we're bringing some of the concrete maintenance back in-house. Just from everything that I saw, that's where, that's where the hemorrhaging was. We're, we're paying all these people to do work for us when we've got staff in-house that should be doing it.
I, I agree, and that was brought up, that we can save money by taking it out of house, I disagree with that. So, I, and part of the reason I feel a little worse in this position is because we, we did that and didn't keep up with our, our maintenance. And now, we're gonna have to pay the price to go back and-
Play catch-up.
Play catch-up.
Thank you, Ron.
Do you want to have any questions for discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those standing on it?
Six zero, first reading. Bill B. twelve dash thirty-three. Ordinance approving the final flat in Green Valley Marketplace and replaid sunny lane addition. First reading, Bill B. twelve dash thirty-three.
Mayor, I'm gonna have to accept bill number B twelve thirty-three for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title on it.
To most of the ownership to accept bill twelve dash thirty-three for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading by the second. Staff, are you doing any of this?
Is there any change in the final flat?
No, I can't, there's no change, this is what planning and zoning-
Yeah, Chris, it's gone through preliminary and the final's gone through P and Z, there were a couple of varying insiders, and went through board of zoning adjustments, so it's ready to go. Engineering will be all finalized and approved prior to the second read, so it'll be good to go.
Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye?
Six zero, first reading. I think that's all of the-
Seeing none resolution, move on to the city attorney's report.
City attorney reporting, your honor.
Next side, the C and N's attorney's staff reports.
Um, yes, one of your department heads, your finance director, Kathy, has some reports that she'd like to hand out. We told you at the last meeting that we would have handouts of expenditure and revenue reports, and these are the new reports from ENCODE Systems. Wanted to give you an opportunity to review those. If you have any questions down at this stage, give Kathy or myself a call and we'll be happy to assist you.
So, this is the type of report that will go in, like the past?
Yes.
You have all of that other?
Yes. Also, I have a few more items here this evening. One of the other items I wanted to share with you is to remind you that this Saturday is the Community Shred Event, as well as a pharmaceutical drop-off that is occurring this Saturday. It's open not only to Green Valley citizens, but also to people that work in Green Valley. And so, we're really looking forward to that event. I know myself, I'm, I'm ready for it. Also, on Monday, May seventh, when we have our next meeting, wanted to talk to the board this evening to see if you would entertain the thought of having a workshop that evening at six P.M. We received a phone call and a visit from Tammy Creason, she's with Gardner Capital, that has a proposed housing development where the Greystone Villas are located. And she'd like to present that to the board that evening at a workshop session and discuss what Gardner Capital would like to do with that area that has since gone bankrupt and the Villas have no longer further developed. Wanted to know if you would be available that evening at six P.M. Maybe, yes? So, I'll invite her and tell her, because she's coming from Springfield, Missouri.
I'm a little older.
Okay.
Is that, is that gonna take a little time?
Um, maybe it'll take a little bit of time. We might have a break, a little break before the meeting starts at seven. I think you guys will have some questions for her, and I wanted to give you ample opportunity to ask those questions.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is it okay? Okay, good. And the last item that I have for you this evening was back in April, it's been a couple of weeks ago now, but many of you have heard about it and it actually was on TV about Congressman Graves, Representative Sarah Woodward coming here. She's the Jackson County Representative, in which my congratulations to Alderman Totten for leading this charge and trying, and attempt to bring awareness of our post office and its reduction in force, its reduction in hours, and our concern about it possibly closing. As a result of that meeting, Congressman Graves did issue a letter to the U.S. Postal Service, and we're in the process of bringing copies of those letters now. Fabulous, boy, you are on it. And it's a, to, was addressed to Sylvester Black, Vice President, Area Operations for the Western Area United States Postal Service, as well as to Gail Hendricks, the District Manager of the Mid-America District for the U.S. Postal Service. And it brings his, our concerns were brought to their attention and he's brought those same concerns to their attention. And I wanted to thank everyone that was involved and thank all the citizens of Green Valley that signed the signature petition, as well as attended the meeting that day with Representative Woodward for Congressman Graves' office. It was a well-attended meeting. Everybody, the nice part about that meeting was that most citizens had a comment. You know, a lot of times, people will come and they'll, they'll watch, but they, they, they don't really wanna step up to the mic. And I'd say probably two-thirds, if not ninety percent of them, all had a comment and stood up to the mic, said their name, where they live, concerned about it, and Sarah took some great comments back. And as a result of that, this is the letter, and this is your democracy in action, so kudos to Green Valley. And that's all I have.
And next side is Board of Aldermen, reports and comments. Alden Arnold.
Glad to be back. Couple of things that came across very early, meeting with some of the public and there were some concerns about, as we have, multiple areas in the community that people drive faster than the children, some residential areas. So, I'll be very interested in hearing what the outcome is with the speed pushes that they have up on Edwood and how those are received. I know that both of these areas have request stop signs as another alternative to slow people down. And so, I'll touch base with you on those concerns and see if we can do something to behave, because I witnessed it firsthand in both the areas where people haunted them and people were by well and excessive, it wasn't by mind for residential areas, so. And we don't have enough officers to be after all the time. If we, they were out there getting all the, those speakers, then people would be complaining that we're becoming a speed trap and, you know, there's no way really to win it. So, I'm just looking at the things like the speed pushing or stop sign are the most economical way to, to slow people down, is, is what we're keeping our offices tight on areas that, that people do. Touch base with you.
Alden West?
Um, yes, there was a recent letter to the editor in our current, in our local paper, from a citizen with regards to the way Main Street looks. I don't know if everyone read that or not. The comment, one of the comments that stuck with me was the burnt-out buildings with the tarts blowing in the wind on Main Street. So, I sort of had the same question that she has as to why are we a year down the line and still have buildings with tarts on them? Instead of buildings that could house the Chamber of Hood businesses or something on Main Street? I mean, yes, my question is, why, what is the delay with regards to getting those buildings finished?
Well, I can tell you, we spoke with the owner just this morning, and they are in the process of getting their demolition permits so that they can remove those roofs. And in the process of getting the contractor lined up so they can replace those roofs, in addition to doing the inside of those buildings. So, I think you're gonna be seeing some work coming up because the, there are, there is an interest in having leaseholders come into those buildings. And so, time is of the essence at this time, and they're really trying, there's a newfound push to get those completed.
So, what kind of timeframe are we looking at then?
Um, for, not all of the buildings have permits on them. Two of the structures, two of the facilities do. The third one, they're working on now, getting engineer drawings, and that takes a little bit of time. So, I'm hoping, I, I think the thought is they'd like to see completion probably within the next sixty to ninety days.
Albert Hethley?
Wanted to mention to Ryan that we, I have received several emails and a few phone calls on the speed fish up north in Rosewood. Everyone has been very appreciative of that going in, so I wanna say thank you to the staff for getting that out there. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I was fortunate enough to do this, hoping to work, I got to participate in the groundbreaking up north here on the new development. In my mind, today was, I think we could mark it as a pretty historic day for the city. And I think that, on one hand, I almost felt guilty standing up there, you know, with a shovel, because all the recognition and hard work goes to the staff and everybody that made that, made today happen, so kudos to everyone.
Holman Scully?
Two things. One thing, I talked to Aaron earlier about speeders from Long Drive. They actually got a household that put a sign with the, "Speed level twenty-five, hit my kid, you won't need a lawyer." Brought that to Aaron's kitchen and asked if they couldn't be a little more visible over there. He's known to have tennis balls come flying at your car too. But I don't know them generally. I can buy their, have them even- And the second thing, I went to the school board meeting last Thursday night. I was very welcome, starting to communicate. I think we're breaking this, the old barrier down. I think the barrier is gone, and I think it's nothing but growing to work with the school, they're willing to work. I, I think we gained a lot of ground in, in the last four or five months since we tried to open this communication up again. And on the second note, on, you guys know, I wanted to start the resolutions for the athletes, for the teachers, anybody from the school that represents them at, at state level. And try to catch up with everybody and not leave anybody out. We kinda talked, and the mayor and I talked a little bit after the meeting last time, and I brought it to them, asked them if we couldn't try to catch one night meeting and do everybody, start to finish of the year, not to leave anybody out. And afraid that we're still gonna miss some, but it'll probably be like the first of June, right after the morning of that, when the school gets out, because you still got sports that run right up to the end. So, sometimes after school is still out, if they keep going on. And they agreed, and we will work with Dr. Welly to help on his side. I will work with staff and Jamie and everybody to get the names to them. I like to just add, I like to make it a, not a board meeting, because I think there will probably be twenty-five, thirty or more. So, I would like to have like a special meeting on, on a workshop to call it. And I think it needs to be done here in Africa, that's something we want to thank them for representing the city of Green Valley. And I think, I like to have like punch cookies or something, and I think there's all been me to pick at the task for that. I, I, I just think this is, next year, we'll probably go back and then cheerleaders or football, volleyball, however, they get all state before or anything, and we'll do it as a year ago. And we won't have somebody who'll have a regular meeting, not like, you know, but I, I think it, I think we need to go back to recognize the youth, the teachers, they got a teacher that, I, I should, some kind of new certification.
National board certification.
Yeah, that's the only one around in this area at this point, you know, to recognize them for their extra time for doing that. They were at the state conference and had given a presentation over it. So, I think like that, I just, I just think it, we used to do it and had a good response, then it got killed because of certain people, so I think that open the door back up and recognize the kids and them. Because we do have a fine school, we have good students here. And I think every time you recognize them, to bring them out is something they can put on their resume. And I think they do appreciate it more than they act upon it. They'll appreciate it more in a couple of years. So, I think that all, I could be resolutions. And anybody else's feedback on that?
I think for this year, it sounds like a great idea because on the hospital, I'm going to Alderman, that, that should go back to the, recognize them as their seasons end. And I don't know if we can work on getting the time together with them, because I think it'd be nice if we get the school board here also for that, with it all together as a, as a group.
And I asked them, and at Thursday, I said that I'd like for them to be there, and they said that, that, most of them said that if they could be there that night, they would. But they, they also said that they wanted everybody to know that this is our meeting, our thing to them. And I, and I understood what they were talking about. Like I say, you know, we haven't talked for so long and nobody went, and as we lays on, I volunteered to meet and go to their meeting, I just think it's gonna open up. Jeff sits here at our meeting and represents the Chamber and, and the school board, so at least, you know, we got open communication now, that's something we didn't have. And I think that's a major breakthrough.
And either you or Kalina wanna work with Mike on getting the, do that?
Yeah, we've been working together so far.
Okay. Okay.
We're happy to do that, sure.
Just kind of, kind of let us know?
So do we want to try to catch? When's the next meeting? You're, Jeff?
We have the first Monday of the month and the third Thursday of the month, so it'll be the...
Maybe two weeks?
Yeah.
Be too much, like that first Monday in June?
They have a meeting the first Monday of June, correct?
Yeah, that will be on...
Can we do it on another night, instead of a Monday night?
Yeah.
We're gonna make it a special, like a Tuesday or Sunday? I think it needs to be towards the front and get a date set, so that everybody knows what we have, our goals to hit.
The first week in June is the fourth through the eighth. So you have Tuesday the fifth, Wednesday the sixth, Thursday the seventh, and Friday the eighth. Let me guess, Friday is out.
Yeah, I'm gonna sell my Friday for a year.
I mean, we could do like a Thursday, and we... But you want, you want to shoot some dates out, have everybody back with you to the better grounders? So we can present those back, try not to do, do that. We'll have, we should have, we'll get some dates locked down for you to take back to them, okay, to meeting. But we'll shoot right there, first, first of June, then everything should be done by then, so we should have everything, okay?
That's all I have there. Thank you.
Oliver Totten?
Well, the good part is, I, I too want to thank Jeff and Mary Stratt for helping with the petitions that we did. And I was totally impressed, both with the, the, several of the businesses that were there, and even Dennis Stratt came with his work clothes on just to be up there at the end of the meeting, because it does make a difference to them. Then I would like to also say that I've had several discussions, and one that's already getting rectified is the behind the alleyway by Main Street Mall, where you can lose a Volkswagen in that hole. They're taking care of that tomorrow. But I had someone come by and tell me that we talk about the improvement of our city on Main Street, and they were upset about the weeds growing along the street and the curb. There are, there's weeds coming up. And they're up there in the Kirby Road too, and so I want to make sure that I brought this to your attention, since they shared it with me.
Is that, is that city right, I mean, does it just right there, is that city right away for us to take care of, or?
I'd say it's the police department. I'm gonna defer to the finance.
We don't have money for a weed eater.
So you took it. How long do we still have a weed spraying program? We used to have one, and it got cut with the budget.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, we, we haven't been doing it now. Just, that's one of the cutbacks that we had to, had to make. Ask everybody to hit the weeds in the street with their weed eater as they go by, I guess. But we can go down and take a look at it specifically if it's a matter of concern.
And then my final thing is, along the line, I was told, there, I believe I was in the audience, that there is a ordinance against clotheslines, and I have had some people complaining that they want to have a clothesline in their backyards. This goes back for most ten years. And the only thing is... Yes, there is an ordinance.
Well, we don't check, research it.
But I would like to see, because likely the one was yelling at me that our electric bills are gonna be going up again, and for gosh sakes, what's the matter with them? It's environmentally better. And I said, the insurance company's gonna like that.
We'll have to research it, and then if it's not, if there's not one, they will let you know, so you can tell people there's not an ordinance. If there is an ordinance, then I guess you can look at, bring it up for consideration, get rid of it if you want.
Will they be there?
All right. Anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Oliver Schaefer?
Uh, a question from Kathy. With the new system getting ready to get put in place with the water billing, a lot of questions. You know, last year, when I was walking around production, a lot of it was the water bill, like Ryan and I talked about. We're happy with the way we've done it, the new system, you know, we can, we can let them pick how they want their billing. What I'm shooting for is, when do you think we can get that up and running for the customers?
I would honestly say probably not until next year, when we do the next setup, win our average figures. It'll be difficult enough just to get things running smooth and all the kinks out of it without trying to make too many drastic changes at the implementation time.
So the quickest that we could actually put this thing in play would probably be January, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm gonna say right now. I mean, everybody's got their winter average for this year already, so they're, you know, used to that. But if we can get it in sooner, we would, but I'm not gonna make any promises.
That's what I was shooting for.
You know what I mean?
Yes, thank you. Ryan, good, good job on your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate you putting so much up in the good. I enjoyed that, it was hard to understand. Good job. And that's all I got, man.
Uh, this is a couple of things. First off, I believe the next meeting, we'll have to look at board, committee assignments, and their approach and all that. So if anyone has any, you know, interests in a board committee, you know, let me know. Or if you have no interest at all, the board committee will let you go. And we'll also have to assign them their approach next time, too, so be thinking about who wants to do that, or whatever. So that'll be next meeting. Let them know if you have anything on your mind about that beforehand. Some other things. One thing we talked about with the purchase of this truck, Oliver Schaefer and I talked about, maybe we should, you know, kind of like we did the workshop, walked through it, parked the other night. Maybe we should go down to the works, and maybe the board can get a better idea of what our equipment looks like, and we'll try and shake it some down there, if we try and walk through and solve firsthand.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I wouldn't have an issue with that. We could probably even have the equipment brought up here just so we're not having to caravan all the way down to the maintenance facility. Maybe park it on the north side of the parking lot, and yeah, be more happy to showcase the equipment that we're trying to get rid of.
So I think that might be a good idea to give us a better idea of what we're looking at and dealing with, and they can point out some of the issues we have with the stuff, so we can sit firsthand.
This is worse than MoDox. Maybe grandest mystery.
So maybe we're gonna get something like that set up, maybe grading.
Well, I think maybe we could even probably try to squeeze it in with Tammy Creason's presentation. Maybe take five or 10 minutes to go out there.
On the seventh?
Yeah.
We could do that, yeah, we probably can do that.
That would give you a chance to look at the equipment before you approve the second read, too.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea to do that. And then my next thought is something, Alex and I have been kind of still in preliminary stages, knocking around, trying to, one of my ideas came to me. So she gets rated needles for me occasionally, but five is, about two percent of it will probably work out. But I was thinking about doing a, and I know Oliver talks, I'm telling her she does this every day. I'll tell you right now, I know, about doing a, kind of a city staff, like the officials, taking a couple of days this summer and doing kind of a walk, walk-through through downtown, the business district, sending out flyers like we did for the, the last overlay meeting we had. You know, send out flyers, hey, we're gonna be in your area on this day, if you'd like us to stop by and speak with you. You know, call up, call city hall, set an appointment, and we'll stop by. And then, you know, myself, whoever else wants to join, you know, city staff, kind of go in and talk to people. I think what it does is it gives us, you know, a chance to talk to them on, I don't wanna say third truth, but I know this sometimes can be maybe intimidating to come here and speak, and if we go to them and talk, we might get some more dialogue going. And if there's something they're gonna point out, say, hey, this area over here, we have issues with it, you know, they can actually show us firsthand, hey, this is an area we have problems with. So very preliminary right now, but hopefully, you know, we'll get a couple of days set up this summer where we can do that. So once we kind of get more, you know, the flow of that and get it, a better idea, we'll, we'll let you know we're gonna do that. And then if none of us want to do it, you know, we can, we can post it and everything, so we're all covered by social log and everything, so.
Before we run it over the lake, where are we at as far as meetings? Where are we at with that? Do we have anything for a little while?
Ken and I are going to be going over the RFP, Request for Proposal. We'll be setting it, once we look at that and kind of determine that we think we have a good rough draft, we'll be reaching out to the same downtown folks that are interested and meet with them and go over the RFP, and have them select a couple of people that could serve on a selection committee, and have them review that RFP. And then once everyone's had that opportunity to look at it, send it out, get those responses back, and then interview the respondents, and have the downtown folks that are on the committee be part of that selection process.
So what's your, what do you think, what's your timetable, you think, Alexa?
I'm hoping within the next thirty days to be able to coordinate that and get that done, at least get the initial meeting in, so we can get a selection of who wants to be on that committee.
That is all I have. Nobody else has anything additional? We will adjourn.